To us yet, we've been identified as a recipient, but there's a lot going on with that one. So I'll talk a little bit more about that as we progress. We've been experiencing some enrollment decline in the current year. We're down about 1,100 for our enrollment, which represents an impact of approximately $10 million. So it's a big, it's a pretty hefty decrease. And we expect that that will recover some in the future year. But right now, that's impacting our current year's finances. And then we're watching a number of areas that are considerably costly this year. Things like our nutrition services where we're providing meals in a different format with more expensive food items than we would typically be able to provide in a traditional environment. Or we have a transportation way where we've experienced a loss of revenue due to the fact that we didn't transport students for a period of time. And things like that that we're in a watch for. And then, of course, we're always on the lookout for being able to weather any other emergencies because you just never know what might come up environmentally or, you know, politically. Who knows when an emergency might arise? So if you go to that next slide for me, this is a representation of our current financial state. You know this about a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago at a board meeting. And this has been updated. I think that if I can't highlight for you the line item, but if you go to the revenues and you look at the column that's 2021 projected year end, it says $462.3 million. That's our anticipated revenue as of February. And so keep in mind February, because, you know, we don't close the books the instant that a month is over. It takes a little bit of time to make sure that we get all of our entries right. We do participate in generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP accounting. And that gives us a little bit more of a requirement of making sure that we're getting these numbers correct and in the proper period. But that counting has left us with February being a little bit before any of our kids start coming back. So kids back four days a week at the elementary level yet. We hadn't brought our secondary students back yet in February. As we start to see the expenditures associated with more students being back in buildings, that that number, these numbers are going to change a little bit. Venues are down $34 million from what we budgeted. So we budgeted $496 million and right now we're looking at $462 million. That's before the legislature has made any final decisions on how they're going to address the current year for 2021. There still could be legislative impacts that come through associated with that. So this is a snapshot in time and we're tracking and monitoring it to see, you know, how things progressed for us. And then the next slide down is the expenditures. We budgeted for roughly $503 million and we're currently at $462 million. So we're down $41 million in expenditures, excuse me. So that leaves us with a fund balance that's right around 8%. And remember again, our reserve requirement is 5%. I am certain that that number will adjust and shift as we move through the months. But just as a snapshot, this is where we're at right now. Now I feel good that next slide for me, you actually can go one more. So this is the process overview for our budget cycle. Kristen's going to handle this slide for us.
Okay, so many of you may have seen this before. This is our budgeting by priorities annual process. And this is essentially our budget process that we do every two years biennially. I can't say that, sorry. In alignment with a legislative session. So in the 2122 year, we're going the full cycle. And so this year, right now, our departments and programs are developing their proposals and looking at their work and providing measurements and data for the superintendent and her cabinet. And I'm just going to kind of walk you around those three determined priorities, identify results and proposals have been done to date. And then next week, we're going to start, the superintendent and her cabinet are going to start looking at those proposals and diving into them. And there's plenty of all day workshops and really some good work coming up in the next few weeks to go over those again. So again, the 2223 year, so next year, we'll just do kind of a review year of the work that was identified in this year. We asked the proposal writers to write a two-year narrative. And essentially, all the dollars in the district need to be represented in a budget proposal in some fashion. The schools or the buildings don't have a proposal in themselves because they are model driven essentially where the students drive their funding and their staffing, et cetera. The other funds, capital projects, ASB and the other funds that we do have as a system, those just roll over from year to year like a typical budget cycle. Next slide, please.
If you go to, if you go to that next slide for us, we've really tried to identify why budgeted by priorities is the best methodology for our budgeting. There are lots of different ways to budget, different processes and opportunities. We think that this is the best solution for us because it provides us with a great level of alignment to our strategic plan. It outlines a framework for how people are doing their work. It helps us identify measurements with intention. And it shows the value that the community is getting put or what they've put in. Pardon me. We also think it fosters a continuous learning opportunity for everybody as you have to consider why you're doing it and what you're doing and what it's applying to each time that you sit down to develop your budget. I think there's a new intentionality behind it that really speaks to being better and doing better. In the end, I think it provides us with a great deal of evidence. And lastly, it's transparent, but mostly it's a best practice. So we're, we're told by the Government Finance Officers Association that this is a best practice in school district budgeting specifically. And I think that we've seen some incredible improvements in the way that we talk about money when we began working with the budgeting by priorities process, just from a finance perspective. The way people have revolutionized over the last seven or eight years that we've been doing this process. And that next slide. And I think that this is a great piece of evidence to show, you know, we, we're able to identify with the alignment that we've done on the next slide. What strategic plan focuses are being utilized and how we're investing in our resources. What we also in each proposal identify which benchmarks people are working to enhance as they submit their request for funding. And so I think that that's where we can actually see that the impact of the dollars is making a difference in the way that we operate. You'll go to that next slide for me. On our budget development cycle, there's a number of steps that we have to implement each year in order to get through a budget process. Certainly revenue estimates, expenditure impacts help us identify whether or not we have excess or deficit dollars. We have to identify if there are any programming needs. That's typically done through a proposal process every other year. And then in the off year, we always have things that crop up that we have to address. We have cabinet evaluate with the program managers and with each other to make recommendations. We bring that back to the board for response and we want to communicate with our board on what those changes and adjustments are. And then we work to ensure that any kind of staffing impacts are communicated out. If we're eliminating positions, if we're adding positions, you know, that needs to be addressed. And then we want to make sure that there's an opportunity for public communication and input and then any modifications that would be needed. Right now, we're working on the blue, the, excuse me, the purple boxes, purple circled boxes there for the revenue estimates and the expenditure impacts. And then those two yellow boxes identify what we're up, what's on deck. That's, that's the meeting with the cabinet and that process starts next week. That'll probably take a good five or six weeks to get through that. You'll go to the next slide. Within each budget, we have our total budget and that's made up of revenues and expenditures. On the revenues, there's several different functional areas of revenues. We have legislative impacts each year, we have internal impacts. And then we often use fund balance to help balance our budget. That's really our savings account. And what that means is that our revenues are less than our expenditures. And so we draw out of savings to help fund some of the expenditures that we have put into our budget. We don't always use all those resources that we plan for, but we have to balance our budget. It's a requirement by law. And if we don't have our revenues and expenditures balanced, then the only other opportunity for funding would be the fund balance. Today, we'll talk about our revenue components primarily. I have a few things to talk to you about with expenditures. But, you know, we're, we're working through all of these processes simultaneously. We're working to identify all of them simultaneously. And with, we have to tick off each one of these boxes in the end by the time we're ready to develop a full. On the expenditure side, we have legislative impacts and internal impacts. And I'll talk a little bit more about the internal impacts today for expenditures. If you'll go to that next slide for me. These are those internal impacts. This actually is both revenue and expenditures listed on this slide. One revenue, the one revenue impact that we're seeing for the next year's budget is an enrollment fluctuation. So I indicated that we'll, we had some enrollment struggles this year. We're down 1,100 students. Kristen's going to give a little bit more info on the enrollment, but that does have an impact on our revenue that we will have to work through. Our fund balance, we had, we had in this current year planned $100 use of fund balance. I don't believe that we will end up using that. And so that's part of the reason why we have a little bit more money in our fund balance than what we had initially planned for. So that's something that we have expenditures built against. And if we have expenditures built against those revenues and we aren't going to use those revenues, then we have to have revenues to cover those expenditures. And so we'll be working to identify whether or not we need to utilize fund balance again in the future year or whether we'll have enough resources in order to cover the expenditures that we have. Another area where this is an expense where we're seeing an internal impact is the opening of Hunt Middle School. So it's the opening of a brand new school. We haven't opened a brand new school in quite a while, but you have to set that school up. So you'll have new utility costs, you have to hire custodians, you have to hire nutrition service workers. You need to hire all of the office staff. Now, the teachers will come from within the pool of teachers because the students are coming from within the pool of students primarily. But you'll need to add a principal and assistant principal and other administrative staff. And so all of those costs add up to the opening of a middle school. We've known that this has been coming. Been talking for this for several years, so this isn't a surprise, but it's now it's time that in additional, additionally, we're opening up the Tacoma online as an alternative learning experience program. And that has a changed revenue source for us. We won't be receiving the same revenue in the way that we had been when students were just part of a regular basic education school. And we'll need to address any concerns that come about with that. And lastly, for expenditures, we have just annual cost increases. This is our typical things that we see every single year. We have to make accommodations for these within our budget, which would include incrementing. So people moving up on the salary schedule from, from bracket to bracket. Cost and inflation increases that occur naturally, insurance costs more, gasoline costs more. We have continued changing laws. The minimum wage just changed, I think, in January of this year. So we'll have to address that in the budget next year. And then paid family medical leave. We have a number of groups that still haven't come on to paid family medical leave. We'll have to address that, things like that. And then negotiated salary changes happen every year as well. If you'll go to the next slide for me. Kristen's going to talk to you a little bit about enrollment.
So as Roslyn mentioned, one of those internal impacts that will have is to our revenue is our enrollment. It is one of the, it is the primary driver of our apportionment dollars from the state. And if you can see on the left there, there's two areas that it really impacts. It's our enrollment, yes, for our revenue. And then how many teachers we need and trying to predict based on how many kids we're going to have in the future year. So talking about the current year there on that left box. So Pierce County as a whole was down, was down about 5,800 kids in multiple districts, not, obviously not just Tacoma. And elementary was one of the main levels that we experienced also, kinder and first. And that is similar in other parts of the county. And Tacoma's portion of that 5,800 kids was about 1,048, which is, you know, close to what Roslyn reported before. So that is a significant loss in current year revenue that we are experiencing. One of the challenges is knowing of those 1,048 kids that didn't get counted this year, are they coming back next year? Are they permanently out? You know, trying to predict that is a little bit more of a challenge than in a normal year. So as we move forward into next year, the demographer did say if not for COVID-19, we would have stayed relatively flat from an enrollment standpoint. And in fact, if not for COVID-19, next year, the kindergarten cohort is actually bigger than it has been in other years. So he took that into consideration. And then we are also trying to gauge whether or not the online schooling opportunity is going to be used and utilized more for kids and maybe reduce our dropout rate to some impact, hopefully. So next slide, please. This is just kind of a long-term look at our enrollment trends from 2016 forward to 2025. These do come from the demographer he's estimating district wide. So you'll see, you know, here's the 28,202 for 2019. And then you can see that drastic drop, 3.7% down in current year. Now, as we move toward, toward next year, it's, when you compare it to 2019, it's still less than 2019 was. However, it's significantly more than we have this year, right? So it's, it's kind of, though we're down significantly this year, he is anticipating that we're going to be up another 2.7% from where we're at today. Again, just to mention on there, the Hunt Middle School, like Roslyn mentioned, the Tacoma online, one of the tricky parts is of the kids that are coming, are they going to be in the brick and mortar side or are they going to be in the TL side or the Tacoma online? We are currently accepting enrollment for the Tacoma online, but that is still a moving target. And so trying to balance that is a bit of a challenge. We're, we're making it through though. And then again, that temporary versus permanent loss of students is also one of our challenges. Next slide, please.
So just to give you some updates on what's happening at the legislature, the budgets were released about a week and a half ago, right before spring break. And both the House and the Senate came out pretty much simultaneously. They're very similar with the budget with some, some very key, a few key differences. And I think that that's where we, we sit now is we're waiting for the conference budget, which is where the House and the Senate come to concurrence on what they want to put into their budget. And then they collectively adopt that. That, that budget seems to be more in question this year than probably in any year that I've worked doing this work. There's some specific outstanding legislation that I think gives us some great concern. So 5128, Senate Bill 5128 is one that regards funding and that funding could potentially have significantly, be significantly impacted. There's questions about the current year, there's questions about the future years. And we're waiting to see what actually ends up in these bills when they're all said and done. 1476 is another one that addresses enrollment declines. And it had been a really big bill when it first started in the legislature. And when I read it yesterday, all that's left in it is addressing levy impacts. So, and I know that they've done a little bit of work in the budget to help address any stabilization concerns. But there's, they're a little bit at odds between the Senate and the House as to how they're going to address those stabilization concerns. And then 1326 was a bill, oh, this is a bill that I just wanted to bring back. We had talked about it at one point with the health and pension and benefits attracted school bus drivers. That bill appears to be dead at this point. However, nothing's ever really dead in the legislature. So, you know, you never know what might end up in the, in a final version of a bill that it never was intended to be part of. So at this point, that doesn't seem to be moving forward. Sine die is April 25th. That's the last day the legislature is meeting in regular session. If they meet beyond that, it would go to a special session. We're not hearing a lot of talks about a special session. So we've got about 10 days of legislation left. And if you'll go to the next slide for me. So these items are within the budgets of both the House and the Senate, and they are already in concurrent on items. So our implicit price deflator is going to be 2%. That's a cost of living adjustment. A couple of years ago, they left what was called the COLA and moved to the implicit price deflator or IPD. Our SEB costs, that's the health benefits, medical benefits for staff are going to be costing us less. So they'll decline in what we're allocated back from the state as well as what we have to pay back to the SEB organization from $1,000 down to $968 per month. Now that actually produces a benefit for the district because we fund a considerable number of staff beyond what the state gives us funding for. So where we're seeing a decline in the costs, we'll be able to capture some, some savings because those staff members cost $1,000 now, they'll only cost $968 per month moving forward. And then pensions are also decreasing. Now, I haven't seen this before in the years I've worked for the state. So this is a, this is an anomaly. But we're actually going to see a decline in our pension rates. What we have to pay as an employer on behalf of the employees will be declining. And so there's a cost benefit to the district for that. Material supplies and operating costs are going up. That's an increase in revenue. And that's meant to help offset a myriad of material supplies and operating costs. So any cleaning supplies, library books, you know, anything that's a supply, toilet paper, you name it. That's covered under that type of category. And then hold harmless will be eliminated. So maybe when we were going through the McCleary process three years ago, we were provided a $12 million hold harmless for one year. And then that was decremented down to 7.6 million. And now it's in this current year in 2021, it's $300,000. And then that will go away entirely in the next budget. So all in all, with just these increases, it nets to about a $700,000 increase in revenue from the state. If you'll go to the next slide for me. I just caution us to say, that's great news that we don't have significant impacts in those items that are already addressed in the legislative budget. But we have so many unknowns and they're big unknowns. So SR3 is one of those unknowns. We're really not sure what the resources are going to be allocated to us as. If we look at SR2, we were allocated $35 million. And the state said, no, we're only going to give you 92, 90% of that. And so they, they cut 3 million off of it as an example. And so I don't know that the state will do the same in SR3 or if they'll take a larger portion off the top or if they'll cut it in half. I mean, I'm really not sure. So that's a big question mark of how they're going to handle that and what that's going to mean for us. There's a question about how they're going to allow for stabilization. Two areas that are key for stabilization would be enrollment and transportation. And the, this is a big debate in the legislature now. The House and Senate seem to be somewhat at odds with one another about how exactly to handle this. And so we'll be watching closely over the next 10 days to see what continues forward. There's also potential categorical impacts. Some of our categoricals are enrollment driven. So if the numbers are included in the budget and they're based off of what you have in enrollment, then your, your allocations would go up or down depending on how your enrollment fluctuates. CTE is one of those. Special ed can be one of those. And learning assistance can be one of those. So there's a number of large categorical programs that we receive a considerable amount of money from the state for that could potentially be impacted. And we're waiting to see what that looks like. And then there's future year impacts, not just the enrollment and transportation impacts that could push forward, but also the levy, I should have added levy on there. Because the levy right now is a calculation of $1,500 per thousand of assessed value or $2,500 per annual average FTE. So if, if our student count goes down and our levy count goes down, we take the lesser of those two, two calculations. And that could mean that we would lose levy dollars depending on whether or not these bills pass. If you'll move on to the next slide for me. I think it's a good segue into what we're going to do with ESR. So we have received notification for ESR1 and 2. ESR1, we spent primarily in the 1920 and in the 2021 year. That will be completely expended. But we are processing through now what SR2 monies should be allocated for. And we're waiting to see what the legislature does with their allocation for SR3. But we recognize that with these resources comes great responsibility. So we want to make sure that we're acting accordingly in being responsive to those dollars. First, we're going to wait and see what the state says. We're going to wait for the allocation. Simultaneously to that, we're planning as cabinet and, and board members, what we think are the needs and expectations of the district. But we want to take that out and get really valuable feedback as to whether or not those are the right things to do. We have a student survey that will be being released as early as next week that's going to help gain specific feedback on ESR dollars. How do we want to spend our ESR dollars? So we're also intending beyond just the students to gain information from the staff and community. And so surveys will be developed around both of those groups as well. And we'll use that feedback to help finalize our plan. And then we'll continue to progress monitor. As we push through the grants, these grants go for three years. So as we push through the grants, you know, things that we had maybe planned on spending resources on may not come to fruition or maybe they aren't needed at the level that we thought they would be. Or perhaps new issues arise that we need to address. And so we'll want to continue progress monitoring those dollars. And we may even do additional feedback loops to help inform future decisions. If you'll go to the next slide. Thank you. This is really around the communications we plan to do for budget. Budget outreach has been a challenging thing for us in past years. And we've done a lot of different types of outreach. We usually focus on one or two types of outreach in a particular year and try different options. So I think that these four options that we have here on this slide are a good complement to one another to try to get a broad sector of our community to be, to have an opportunity to engage. So one is a budget calculator. Kristen's going to give some really good details on our budget calculator. Another is our budget advisory committee. Let me just say on the budget calculator, we did one about 10 years ago. So this is the first one that we've done in about 10 years. And I think that it'll be a good tool. I'll let Kristen tell you all about it though. I don't want to give too much away. And then the budget, that's my teaser. And then my budget advisory committee commentary would be that we did a budget advisory committee two years ago. I was reading through the report today of our budget advisory committee from two years ago. And it really was a fantastic set of information and a good experience. It was a good experience for me. I hadn't done a process like that before. And so I think that it added a lot of value to the finance team at a minimum. So if we can replicate that level of success, I would be thrilled. We'll also do budget webinars. We did those last year, a series of webinars that gave people an opportunity to ask questions and hear a little bit more detail about the budgets that we had put in place. And then formally, we'll, we'll do a public hearing. That's actually a requirement by law. So of course, we're going to do that, but it does still provide people an opportunity after everything's done and right before we're about to, you know, finalize our budget to make sure that they, they've had a voice in it. So with that, I'll hand it over to Kristen to give you a little bit of detail about the budget calculator and the budget advisory committee.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the budget calculator. And essentially what the budget calculator is, it's a tool that we can reach out to the community and has kind of a three-pronged benefit. First and foremost, it helps inform the community of where our revenue streams are, where our expenditure, expenditures are and the strategic goal that those expenditures are associated with. So it just gives a really transparent look at what our budget is and it kind of drills down a little bit deeper than your typical report with a bunch of numbers on it, right? So, and then secondly, it provides for engagement. So a community member can go into this and look at the various categories in spending. And then they have the ability to go in and flex. I want to increase this particular area by $20,000 or $2 million or whatever their area of interest is and how they want to impact that. And then they can see how that will impact the bottom line. And so if you can see there at the top of the slide, it says negative 50,000, for example. This calculator is going to be representative of the 2021 budget. That's, that's the baseline that we're beginning with. The, the revenues and the expenditures are what we have today and the different programs. And so as people go in and, and increase And so as people go in and, and increase, decrease again, areas of interest, they will see how that will impact the bottom line. And it helps with, you know, because balancing a budget, especially this large, with all of the federal mandates and, and the compliance and other things, it's, it's it's not easy, you know, it is, takes some thought. And so the good news is it helps the community hopefully understand and see a better transparent way of our budget and the inner workings of it. And then thirdly, what this tool will do for us is it'll help give us, it helps inform the superintendent and her cabinet what the community is thinking and what areas of interest. So in each, on the right-hand side there, you can see, you know, the little, the sample says partnerships. And then you've got Hilltop Artists there, that is a contract that we have with Hilltop Artists. And if a community member wanted to, they can go in and make a comment about it, they can increase, decrease and give a little feedback so that we can kind of hear them and, and see where they're coming from that way. To move to the next slide, please. To move to the budget advisory committee, this is going to be another approach in communicating with the public. And this is, as Rosalyn mentioned, our second cohort will be coming up this spring for this committee. It went really well the last, in my opinion, in two years ago. And we are going to be doing it virtually, obviously. So it is a district-led citizens advisory group designed to inform the public on education and how our funding works and also allows them to participate in deeper into the work and the proposals. They'll have opportunities to talk to directors, ask them questions, read the proposals. They too will have an opportunity to, you know, as a community member, obviously, they could fill out the budget calculator. But that's going to be one of the areas that we're going to focus on in one of our meetings that they can go in and, and play around with that calculator. Again, they'll have opportunity to learn about, the first two sessions are going to be like an education series. And they'll be asynchronous taped sessions of, you know, just how our funding works and why we kind of, you know, can't do some of the things that, that, why we do the things we do in some cases. And then other than that, they can just go back and forth and ask questions. And it was a great opportunity for learning last time. Oh, I'm trying to click the screen, I don't have control of it, I'm sorry. Again, budget advisory committee is going to be open to all committee, community members. When we did this a few years back, we had to have a cap on it because we had a size limit in the space that we have. But virtually, we don't have a size limit, so that's great news about that. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to be putting out some requests for people to participate. And again, the phase one is the two online informational sessions, which is going to be about early May. And then phase two will be those meetings with the different programs and to talk about the work of those programs and allow the community to ask questions and provide feedback and help inform the superintendent and her cabinet where the community, what they're thinking. Next slide, please. This is kind of an overarching just timeline of how the budget advisory committee is going to progress. We have a charter that basically just, you know, talks about why we exist and what the purpose is and how we're going to go through the process. We're going to go out for requests for committee members, that's going to happen soon, probably next week, hopefully. And there's that education series and that, because it's asynchronous this time, people can go, anyone can go out there once it's posted and, and learn about our budget and how it's developed. Then we have the budget calculator that we spoke of. And again, that piece is where the, the committees themselves will have the opportunity to go in and discuss. And then the program director conversations, and then we're going to collect the feedback from the committee. And then we're going to share it with superintendent and provide her what their thoughts are. And a couple of years ago, we did, I believe, provide some outcomes of that for the board. So you guys will have a kind of a high-level report of what those thoughts were. Through the entire process, we're going to be asking the community members to be looking at the programs and the, and the proposals that they're discussing through an equity lens. And you'll see down there below are the different areas that we're going to ask them to kind of probing or guiding questions for the community yet members to look for in the proposals and to ask questions about. So I am very excited about this, it is going to be, it's going to be great. So hopefully, some of you can participate and be there while we go through it, so more to come.
Great, and if you'll go to that next slide for me Travis. This is our last slide. And this is just a quick overview of, you know, this is what we have coming up here in April and May. We've got our legislative budget updates, so we'll continue to bring information back because there's going to be a lot of information coming here, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. The budget calculator should be released shortly. And then budget advisory committee meetings should be starting shortly after that. And we will be working on BBP proposal review with cabinet over the next several weeks. So just as a highlight of what will be coming up in the next couple of months. We'll be happy to share any thoughts or questions that you might have.
Thank you so much Rosalyn and Kristen for the presentation. Want to open it up for comments or questions from members of the board? I'll just do a full whip around just to see if anyone has thoughts or questions. Start with Vice President Baumright.
Wow, that was very thorough and a lot of information really quickly. So thank you team for walking us through that. I appreciate the depth of, of information that was provided, both in the revenue as well as the projections, et cetera. I had a couple of questions, one of them relating around opening up Hunt and the new expenses that, that obviously are going to relate to, you know, kind of filling, filling up the building with the, you know, the furniture, et cetera. But as you said, we already have the kids in the system. And so is that going to mean that once, once the, the kids are assigned to Hunt, then the teacher percentage is picked from teachers that are currently in other schools and are moving to Hunt, correct? Okay, and then, so that means that we're going to have a, a reduction in students and teachers in the other middle schools that are been, that have been hosting them for this period of time, correct?
We did a boundary study maybe four years ago or so. And at that time, we set boundaries for Hunt since we were going through the process anyway. And so Hunt has boundaries developed and determined already. Those students have already been notified of their homeschool and, and made all of those accommodations if there were any needs to move from one school to another. And the process for hiring for teachers at Hunt is already in process. And so what they'll do is they'll hire from wherever in the district people have applied or potentially externally, depending on HR's process. I'm not sure where they're at in the external hiring process yet, I know there's contractual rules, we've got to follow those rules. So I believe that we're in good shape there. There are some eighth grade students that were allowed to maintain their last year at their current school. Most of the students are coming from Hunt, excuse me, from Mason and Truman. And so they were able to stay at the school that they were at. And there's another accommodation that we made for a certain area that could keep their kids in the school because there was a question, I don't know, we made some, we made some allowances for grandfathering for a segment of the population at the time we did the initial boundary revisions.
Okay, great, so, so what I'm hearing you say is this is not going to be a surprise to anyone in the, in the community. So thank, at least the kids who are impacted, so.
I'm sure there'll be a few that are surprised, but you know, we, we tried to do our best.
Right, cool, thank you. Another question I had was around the enrollment. We have had a decrease in enrollment because of, you know, during COVID, of one thousand forty-eight students. And so Kristen, I guess I'm wondering, I know when they do the projections, how many, what is the, what is the piece of that that's at the kindergartners that people actually held back because they didn't want to send them in COVID and they wanted them to have a full, you know, inexperience? So are we, I mean, what, how much of that number of the thousand forty-eight are anticipated to be coming in as kindergartners? Do we know?
Unfortunately, no, I mean, that's, that's the great unknown, right? Is we, we know what we were projected to have this year and we know what we were projected to have if all things were constant. But that, those students that just aren't in our system, we do, we do have some data that says, you know, a lot of parents decided to homeschool this year or they maybe wouldn't have in a normal year. So once we go back to normal, we can maybe, you know, hopefully get some of the students back that way. But to know exactly all of them, where they were or who's coming back, especially the kindergartens because they're not in our system yet unless they're in the preschool, that's one of those, those great unknowns, so.
What was the difference between the projected number of kindergartners and the actual number of kindergartners?
The number?
Yeah.
In this current year?
Yeah, the current year, we projected for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, a certain number of kindergartners. How many actually showed up, what was the?
Uh, I'd have to get that to you, I do not, we definitely have that, I just don't have it at the top of my head, I can definitely get that for you.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to look at that and get an idea of how many of those, what's the gap between the anticipated and the actual? And maybe that was part of a closest approximation of where we might be expecting that to come in as kindergartners when we, with the, with the next crop of kindergartners. So it might be a boost of about that much, was what I was thinking.
Were they delayed or were they homeschooled? So will they be first graders next year or kinders too, right?
Well, that's a good point, now it's so complicated. But anyway, so I, I'm going to let others ask questions and might swing back after you're, we're done.
Can you direct, any comments, I see a hand from Super Santorino, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say that we had Les Kendrick come to the, he's the demographer. And we had him come to the superintendent's, Pierce County Superintendent's meeting. And he was very optimistic about the number of kinders that we would have, kinders and first graders that we would have this year. So even though it doesn't help us count and it doesn't give us an enrollment number, it, it, it seems like it, it may be positive.
Great, thank you. Director Strozer, did you have any comments or questions?
No questions, just a quick thank you to both Rosalyn and Kristen for the preparation of this presentation. But I am overly excited for the budget advisory committee not having a cap at all. So COVID hasn't given us too many blessings, but that's a blessing now. So as many people that want to participate, I just want to encourage folks to do so because this is a real opportunity to have your voice heard. So thank you for embedding that into this and I'm hoping that we get a lot of turnout for it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Keating, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have just a couple. So in whichever slide earlier on, there was the box about legislative impacts. And just more for clarification for those that are watching. In my mind, what I heard is like, is that would include like unfunded mandates and/or new laws, you know, with a financial impact to them. Could, would someone just clarify to make sure that there is clarity for the public around what legislative impacts mean?
One use, I, I think we may need to go back to the slide so that I can make sure I understand what you're meaning, what you're asking.
So there was a graph, it was one of the slides early on that had a graph. And there was, there were, I don't remember which slide, I didn't write that down. So, but just like if you were to talk about what, you know, in a budget, what the legislative impact would be.
Can't say it.
Try fifteen.
Yeah, it might be slide, it's like either slide fifteen or sixteen, I think, Travis. If you would please. This one or the next one?
No.
That one?
No, it was a whole graph, there were multiple boxes and. That, wait.
Go up two more, one more, one more before.
I feel like this is a game show now, okay. One more back.
Big Money No Way Miss.
I saw it.
So you're asking about unfunded mandates?
So no, what, well, I'll ask the question again. So what I'm, what I was hoping is, so there was a category about, that was titled legislative impacts. And I was just hoping that for the public, that could be explained.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at the slide scrolling through here.
I think it's the one that's the hierarchy, it's up at the top, a little bit more right there.
Yes.
Yeah. So we have legislative impacts both under revenues and under expenditures. And legislative impacts under revenues and expenditures can be any myriad of things. And really, when I look at that, what I'm saying is, when the legislation is done for the development of the budget, what, what's the, what's the reason that we see these changes? Is it because the legislature has defined it or the laws are requiring it? In fact, just general laws, I would consider those internal impacts. So when the paid family medical leave happened the first time, I might have said it was a legislative impact. But now that it keeps happening and I keep seeing new increases, I'm just calling that an internal increase. And then as far as legislature revising the levy or legislature revising the IPD, those are legislative impacts that can happen, some of them happen every year, some of them happen one time. But it could include unfunded mandates, it could include completely funded actions. Oftentimes, because we fund so many staff beyond what the state funds, even when they fund it fully, so you know, quote unquote, fully, we still have a financial impact because we fund so many staff beyond what the state gives us resources for.
That's excellent, thank you.
I can call that out, yeah, I can call that out for the future.
Okay, thank you. And then a question, I had a, one more question and then just a comment. So with enrollment, so also understanding that predicting enrollment is just going to be challenging. But I'm wondering about like, are there preparations with anticipating potential changes like in the fall for students or families to choose TOL versus in-person? Because I, and I, and I feel like that's an even difficult question to answer. But I guess I'm just wondering if there, what preparations or what conversations are happening in potential anticipation of a flux of families changing their, whether they're going to be in-person to TOL or vice versa.
So I'll jump in, you know, it seems to me Lisa and Josh may want to jump in too. But the best thing we can do is try to get families to respond and say, what are you thinking? You know, because the more families tell us right now, well, we're going to send our student to TOL or we're going to send them to school. And we can't account, I mean, and when you talk about preparation, there really isn't a solid prep except for to know where we have extra and where we have little because that game and, you know, I think all of the board members have been a part of it. It's painful, you know, in the fall because you have to do those switches. But there is really not a way for us to preclude that without having exact numbers. And we've seen huge deviations when we didn't have a COVID. And you know, or the one I remember the most is when Point Defiance had their rent raised at the last minute and five hundred families moved out, you know, moved out of the apartment and that affected the school enrollment. And so we had to, you know, we had to make an add-up patient and a change that was painful, you know, for Point Defiance. But so anyway, that's a long answer to say, the best we can do is ask families to commit and to look at those. And then Adam, Adam Kulis keeps, does a good job of, you know, checking in again and checking out families. That's the other thing we can do is instead of, you know, it used to be we'd make a number in spring and then we'd wait and see what happened in the, in the fall. And we don't do that now, we check in all summer long to see what's happening.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I'll, my, my last comment is around the advisory committee, the budget advisory committee. And I echo what Director Stroger said as well. And I, you know, I just, I'm excited to be on this side of things with this process because I had a really good friend who was on the committee two years ago and still speaks very highly of the value that she gained participating and just the information. And so she became far more informed and then able, you know, better to just in, in the community, be able to talk more just from a better informed place. So I'm also really looking forward to the advisory committee and also echo Director Stroger in hoping that people actually use this as an opportunity to be. Strozer in hoping that people actually use this as an opportunity to be involved. So thank you for including that.
One other additional comment to Superintendent Santorino, we've already started registration for the TOL program, which will offset that. And we are currently, have over 1,000 students registered for next year. So we're able to then back those out of the traditional brick and mortar buildings already, because those families have already committed to that TOL piece. So that's, that process, Superintendent Santorino's mentioned is alive and well. And we're able to start to see that now and make those plans as families commit.
Thank you. I just, I don't have really many questions, just have a couple of comments. One, I just want to acknowledge the work that went into putting together that Budget Calculator. I can remember a couple of years ago when we were going through this process, Rosalyn, I think you and I talked, and you were trying to track down the old calculator and trying to pull one together, but there just wasn't the time. So I just want to acknowledge the work that went into actually making that happen this time around, because it could have easily been something that you all just let go and like didn't pursue, but it looked great, and it seems like a tool that's going to be really useful for the community to get a feel for the budget. So I just want to thank you all for bringing that back and following through to create that calculator.
You can thank Kristen exclusively, I mean, yeah, like outright.
It's been easy. So thank you for bringing that forward as another tool to help people engage with the budget. And then just as a follow-up to the Tacoma Online conversation, I just want to note just for the community, the ALE stands for Alternative Learning Experience, I think that's right. And just for the community or for just awareness, I think people who are in Tacoma Online had one experience this year. And if by moving to an Alternative Learning Experience program, like from the statutory definition, that means there will be some changes in kind of the experience that students have, or potentially, if, and if there are, like with the requirement for students to have individual learning plans and all of that, I just think that in order to help make people, help inform the decisions that families are going to be making sooner than later, I don't know if I've seen any communication yet about what the differences might be from this year to next year, yeah, from this year to next year, or if there will be really any differences in how students and families experience Tacoma Online. But if there are, I think we should be pushing that communication out sooner than later too, just so that people have a full picture of what that opportunity can look like moving forward in the district. So, you know, I'm not assuming that there are big differences, but if there are, if there are any other kind of logistical things that will take a little bit longer for families to transition when they want to make the decision, I think just including people into those things sooner than later would be good to help inform people's decisions.
President Cobb, can I, can I ask a question along those lines? Because what you're saying is something, it's a really important point, is that TOL being designated an Alternative Learning Experience means it won't be the same or funded at the same way, level as it is for in-person learning, correct? And so the structure is different, and maybe just, I know you're suggesting that, that we, there's, that the school district get the message out about what those are differences are, but I don't know if Deputy Superintendent, if you can give like just a bit of an overview about what is the ASE, ALE designation mean and what's the difference?
And from my perspective, I was just saying, I think the funding issue is an issue for us to deal with internally. But I, my main point was if there's any big differences in the experience for families on that side of things and communicating about that earlier.
We're not anticipating major structural changes for TOL. What we're experiencing is the TOL staff and community is getting better and better at the work that they're doing. I'll remind everyone that, you know, the TOL program of 4,000 students, I think Adam declared it was the 49th largest district in the state today. Just per perspective, was stood up and developed and implemented in a matter of months. And so that staff has just done a phenomenal job, and the community that's working with it is found out in, you know, ways that make it work for them. And so we're not anticipating major structural changes. I think what families will continue to see is us get better and better at building relationships, providing personalized curriculum, monitoring progress, those elements. And so it's not status quo in that way, but I don't, we're not anticipating major structural changes.
And I honestly, that program we continue to get better, and for students and families who may have been on the fence about TOL this year, didn't decide to go that route, but really feel like it could have been a good thing for their student, I just think communicating some of those, some of how we envision the program looking this year, that may have not been a feature this year, would be really helpful for families. We had a student do Tacoma Online, and that worked really well for him last year. It probably won't be the path that he follows next year, but for, again, families who were on the fence, just saying more about what we know now, I think would be helpful.
I think that's really wise advice for every family, is every year you should be looking at what's the best option, because kids ebb and flow, and their, their learning processes are there. So, you know, that's, we know that there is definitely a demand by our Tacoma students based off of their initial enrollment, that they, they want that experience. And so those numbers continue to grow daily, which is exciting, and it just becomes another portfolio of options of choice for the Tacoma Public Schools and our students. So I think I understand the intent is if we start to see things unfold, we're in close contact with the state around the ALE, the ALE designation. Even this week, we've been in communications, what does that mean? Because this year, the ALE designation was suspended because of COVID and hybrid. We're still going to have to look at the guidelines for COVID for what we call our traditional brick and mortar schools as well. And so we'll be communicating a lot in those options. But I think President Cobb, I hear you, is if we're anticipating any significant changes in that structure, we will make sure we communicate that to not only the TOL families, but all families, because it may be a viable option for families that may have not selected the state.
Thank you. We did a board member here tonight, so I want to give them a chance to share any thoughts or reflections or questions about all this budget information that was shared. So I'll start with Ms. Pearson, Jasmine, any comments tonight? I don't see her, and I, or even are not here, I see them on other invites. Do we have any of our student members actually on tonight? I don't think that we do. Okay, just don't want to forget them. Any other additional comments or questions from the board? Any last words from Rosalyn or Kristen?
No, just thanks for the opportunity, and we're chugging along, and we're excited about what's to come.
Carla, Josh, any last words?
Thank you.
Hey, there are none?
Good job.
Thanks, Superintendent. Hearing no further comments, we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, thanks.